Agenda tonight, we do have citizens' comments. And Samantha, are you here?
Hi, great. If you'll come forward, and I'm not even going to make an attempt at your last name. I'll let you tell us that. And you can speak from the microphone. And if you will give your address as well, when you over you come to speak.
I do have additional comments.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, so, oh, it's really loud. All right, so, can you hear me?
Uh huh.
So, good evening. So paraphrasing Municipal Code of Ordinance, Section 10-102, no person is allowed to keep foul within 1,000 feet of a private residence, public street, or business. Last modified, 2017. Since then, we have experienced lockdowns, nationwide food shortages, supply chain issues, which still cause disruptions today, and food price increases not seen before in my lifetime. So the residents of Smyrna have a right to secure an alternative to the grocery store chains, especially with the growing population in Smyrna. And this is where the grassroots movement dubbed backyard chickens comes in. A family of four can easily eat 10 dozen eggs in one month, and that doesn't include baking. The nutritional value of an egg from your backyard to one found in the store is night and day. One reason is because backyard chickens are allowed out in the sun, which makes their eggs high in vitamin D. That's a vitamin that many Americans are deficient in, with 3 million cases reported each year. One egg from your backyard contains about 80% of the recommended vitamin D daily intake, which is a very large number. Backyard chickens are not kept in what are known as battery cages, like the hens that produce the eggs in the store. In the info packet that I will provide later, there are pictures of these cages. And because they're not kept in these cages, they keep themselves in good condition, which reduces the risk of salmonella to near zero. Chickens are actually a clean animal by nature. The associated dirty and smelly image comes from the factory-farmed chickens that are kept in these cages, unable to escape their waste. It's actually very gross. So you don't actually need any acreage to keep hens. Modern coops still allow much more room than a battery cage, and these coops are so easy to maintain that many cities, including LA and New York, allow you to keep chickens. There was even a story in 2015 where a New York City apartment sold for over $1 million because it had the amenity, which was chickens plus coop. And I have personal knowledge of a family in the Philadelphia area that kept chickens during the pandemic. And when there were no eggs in the store, and they weren't allowed to leave their house, they were very lucky to have those chickens. They even shared the eggs with neighbors. The chickens are actually not all that noisy. They don't bark at mail carriers. They don't bark at your neighbors. Even roosters are quiet somewhat. They clock in at 48 decibels. A dog barking softly is 70. I believe a lawn mower is about 148. So hens do make a little bit of noise when they are laying eggs.
3 minutes, Mayor.
Oh, that's time?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I went on too long.
That's okay.
But I will provide info packets.
You have more stuff for us to look at later?
Yes.
Okay. If you will give that to Amber, Amber will make sure to get that to us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counsel, we took backyard chickens a little while ago. Is there anything that makes you all want to revisit this? I think last time, we looked at neighboring communities. We also looked at, we also kind of went out and surveyed. And I think what we found was as many people didn't want them as did. So is there any desire to revisit this? Okay. Thank you so much for coming. Okay, our meeting agenda tonight, I will call our meeting to order. Our prayer tonight will be done by the Chaplain, Tim York, from the Serna Police Department. And our pledge is going to be done by Mr. Richard Ferrer from the USMC with the VFW. So Chaplain York, if you will come forward, please.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for our city. Thank you for those who govern our city. We do pray your blessings and your wisdom upon them tonight. We pray for every employee and those who serve the city. We ask you for protection, for leadership in all that they do. Lord, we thank you that you have blessed our town with so many benefits. And Lord, we ask you to continue to guide us, direct us. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Amber, will you do roll call?
Counsel Nicole? Counsel Maurel? Counselwoman Peebles?
Here.
Counselman Short? Counselman Sullivan? Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
And Mayor Reed?
Here.
Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is approval or correction of the minutes of the September 6, 2022 regular meeting and the September 22, 2022 work session meeting of the town council. Jeff, are these in order?
In order as to form, Mayor.
Great. Any additions or corrections from counsel? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item four, which is correspondence and communications. Brian or Amber, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor and counsel.
Okay. Move on to item five, awards and recognitions. Tonight, we have the Purple Heart Proclamation. And Amber, if you would read that for us.
I will. Whereas our town of Smyrna community has great admiration and the utmost gratitude and respect for all of the men and women who have and continue to selflessly serve our great nation and this community in the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. Whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. Whereas citizens of our country have received the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service. Whereas the town of Smyrna seeks to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Mary Esther Reed of the town of Smyrna hereby declare Smyrna to be a Purple Heart City in recognition and honor of the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform and those wounded or killed while serving to protect our freedoms. Proclaim this the 11th day of October, 2022.
Richard, if you'd like to come forward.
I think you all see how important this is for the town of Smyrna. And we just want to thank you all. And thank you for bringing this to our attention.
No problem.
And we would just like to present you all with this proclamation.
Actually, sir, why not? I want to thank you guys. My name is Richard A. Farr. I'm the VFW State Chaplain. 813 Yakima Way, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Please don't hold that against me. But now you guys, Laverne, Smyrna, Murfreesboro, and Rutherford County are now Purple Heart Cities. You guys are now going to be on the MOPH, the Military Order of the Purple Heart DOT Trail. And it's going to be online. I've got to go talk to my superiors, and I'll get that information to Ms. Amber. But now, having this relationship with Smyrna, because I love Smyrna. I love Murfreesboro. I love Rutherford County. And I think it's great to have a relationship with the surrounding towns. And we have 20, how many, 26, 30,000 veterans in Rutherford County?
46.
Yeah. We have a lot of veterans here. So thank you so much. And thank you, council members. And thank you, Ms. Reed, Mayor Reed.
Thank you.
Ooh rah, ah, Marines.
So thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other awards or recognitions tonight, Brian?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. And these are items that are determined by our town manager that are routine items that don't necessarily need to be talked about individually. I do always like to read each one, so those here in the audience, as well as those at home watching, can, will know exactly what we're voting on the consent agenda. If there is an item that counsel would like to see pulled off and discussed individually, we can do that. Our first item is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Sessions Paving to perform roadway patching throughout town. Item B is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Jenny King for the annual janitorial services contract. Item C, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement relative to the install of a new traffic signal at the intersection of Ammable Road and One Mile Lane. Item D, approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Kimberly Horn for the NIFA and design for the CHRISAA grant project for upgrades to sidewalks along Old Nashville Highway from Enon Springs to Rock Springs Road. Item E is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute change order number three for the ITS Phase 1 and 2 project. Item F is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Blastoff Incorporated to repaint the aircraft for the Captain Jeff Koosh USMC Memorial. Item G is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an educational service agreement with Middle Tennessee State University. Item H is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute the contract with the Tennessee Highway Safety Office Grant. And item I is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal agreement with Motorola for the police department's radio system. Now, our last item on the consent agenda is consideration and approval of modification for the Smyrna Police Department Standard Operating Policy 5-7 Handle With Care Program. Counsel, is there an item you'd like to discuss individually?
Mayor, I have one.
Okay.
From item C.
Okay, we will pull that one off and talk about individually. Is there any other item? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We'll now talk about item C, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement relative to the install of a new traffic signal at the intersection of Ammable Road and One Mile Lane. Okay?
Actually, just a couple of questions.
Sure.
This traffic light, we did, we went through T-DOT to get this approved. And we've been waiting on them, well, waiting on our contractor or the selection of a contractor to do this.
Right, Tom can address this. But we just recently, we had it as a placeholder at the planning committee, waiting for the bids. The bids came in two days ago, and we were able to go through the bids and recommend the approval of the contractor. Once we get past tonight's meeting and it's approved, we'll move forward with the notice to proceed with the contractor. And they have a 90-day window to place that red light.
So we can go ahead and proceed? This is not requiring a T-DOT approval on this? Okay.
Yes.
Was this one you were talking about, where you already had the mast arms?
Yes. We've got everything in place.
If it anywhere.
How could we possibly allow?
Okay. I was just trying to get clarification if it was.
This is one that's been needed, and we've had a lot of citizens' comments about. And we were able to repurpose some mast arms that we had at another place that will work perfectly in that location. So, and the engineering had already been done in the field, so it's something we can move forward with.
Okay.
Actually, after tonight, if you approve this item, Tom and I talked about this today. We will actually be sending the letter to continue to the contractor tomorrow. And the clock starts pretty quick.
Well, yeah, we'll have a, we'll schedule a meeting with the contractor within the next few days and then issue them the letter to notice to proceed after that.
Okay. Questions, other questions?
Tom, will that be a four-way light eventually?
Yes.
So the opposite One Mile Lane will eventually open up into another gateway onto One Mile.
Baptist church, I think there's a Baptist church built up there. So we are designing it to where it's far enough away for that future road, as well as additional, potential additional turn lanes onto One Mile Lane. So we're moving far enough to where we shouldn't have to move it later on.
I thought it might be.
Other questions or comments?
Tom, it appears you've gotten really good at drawing on pictures and sending those out in email. So could we get a picture of this, of the drawing of where the red light's going to go?
I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Other questions for Tom? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now move on to old business. And tonight, we have...
Eight?
We have eight public hearings. Item F will also be a public hearing. So our first public hearing is consideration of an ordinance amending Title 5, Municipal Finance and Taxation, Section 806, advertising and bidding of the Municipal Code to allow an increase in bid limits. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and counsel. As we spoke at the workshop, the Tennessee Legislature made changes to TCA 1231212. And this elevates the competitive bidding threshold from 10,000 to 25,000. And so, in order for us to follow that, you have this ordinance there before you, which will allow us to do that.
Questions for Jeff on this?
I would assume, Jeff, that this really doesn't, it's not going to obviously make a huge difference. I would think everything was already over 10. And there's not a lot of things under 25 these days.
This will save, actually save the taxpayers money because you're not having to bid for those items that are $11,000 and those types of things. So those costs can be higher than what you might think to advertise a newspaper.
Other questions for Jeff? Okay, this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item, you can come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to counsel for a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Chair can have the approval, and I'll take the second.
Okay, motion of the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is also a public hearing, a consideration of an ordinance amending Title 5, Municipal Finance and Taxation, Section 815, contract approval and change orders to Municipal Code, of the Municipal Code to allow an increase in bid limits. Jeff, do you want to take this one?
Yes, Mayor and counsel. In conjunction with the last item, this would be a change in ordinance which would allow, or give the town manager the authority to enter into agreements or liabilities that are under $10,000 without the need of bringing it to the council for a workshop, and then council to vote on it.
Well, and we had discussion about this at the workshop, that if there is something that Brian or a town manager feels that needs to be brought before counsel, whether it's that dollar amount or not, he will do that, so.
Correct. Like a copier, I think I used as an example. But there are many other things that are under that amount.
Yep. Any questions for Jeff or Brian on this? Okay, this is a public hearing. So we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to counsel for a motion.
I'm moving to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 21-22 to adopt the fiscal year-end 2022 budget amendments. Hi, Rex.
Hello, Mayor and counsel. These are the fiscal year-end 2022 budget amendments. The General Fund, State Street Aid, and Capital Project Fund have some line items that need appropriated. These expenses are offset by current year revenues. And there are no changes since the first reading.
We've gone over these numbers quite a bit between workshop and meeting. Is there any questions for Rex on any of these? Seeing none, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll go counsel for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28, Partial 72.00, from C2 to PCD requested by Frank Malawski. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 71 one-hundredths of an acre and is located at the corner of President Place and Isabella Lane. Hey, Kevin.
Yes, Mayor. Yeah, this is a rezoning request from C2 to the PCD. It's at, it is, as you stated, directly at the intersection of President Place and Isabella Lane. Laney's Plan would support it. It's kind of as our Sammert corridor character area. So this would certainly fit within that, as well as the existing zoning. The proposed PCD is for a quick-service oil and loop business. Building is proposed to be just under 3,000 square feet, four service space. Building would be a mix of brick and ethos in East Design Review. Access would be from Isabella Lane in two locations. The southern access would be a full access, but the northern one, which was closer to the intersection, would be for egress only. As a part of this, a request, developer has requested a building setback of just over 28 feet from Isabella Lane and five feet from the side property line on the western side. This is a little different from the original request. It actually moved it further away from the road. Also, they eliminated a request. The original request had some signage variations that they did withdraw, and it was not needed any longer. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, 641 against, and staff would recommend approval. And nothing has changed on this since you all looked at it in first reading.
Well, I think we had quite a bit of discussion that this is just a really difficult lot. And it's, what, 15 years, did we say?
It's in that range, yes.
Yeah. So counsel, any questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to counsel for a motion.
I'm moving to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second. Somebody got down there.
I think HG woke up.
I think HG said, yeah.
HG, did you wake up?
I'm just cruising over here.
There you go. Motion in a second, any discussion?
I still have the same concerns I had before. So what it means is that a car-related type business and the park, not the parking, but the stacking issue, so.
Kevin, is there, how many did they say that they could? Did you say four bays?
There's four bays. And they can have, there's one in each.
One inside?
One inside and two outside of each one.
Okay.
So 12 total cars.
So 12 total, okay.
Before you could get past, at first, before it starts to curve and back towards the road.
Okay. As I recall, the fact that we do have four bays here, it tremendously helps with the stacking. And when we were looking at it, we didn't feel like that was a concern even during peak usage, that there was more than enough stacking available.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One.
Motion passes with one note. Item E is public hearing, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 29, Partial 17.03 and Partial 17.02, from PUD to PUD with an H2 height overlay requested by Bob Hackel. The properties requested to be rezoned contain approximately 3.54 acres and are located north of Industrial Boulevard. Kevin?
This is a, it is north of Industrial Boulevard as part of the Colonial Town Park PUD. These are a couple of lots, kind of on the north side of that, that have never developed. And this is one of those. Again, this is a Sammert Road corridor character area, so this certainly fits our Laney's Plan. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R4, R6, and PUD in town, and I2 heavy industrial in Laverne, as this lot does actually border Laverne. The joint and parcel was actually approved for height overlay in January of '08 that was never utilized. This amendment, it just does not change any of the uses on the property or anything like that. It is just a, have for a height overlay to allow a hotel with a height of 45 feet, two and a quarter inches, which is what was shown on the architectural evasions when the site plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission back in August. Again, this use is allowed within the PUD. Planning Commission did recommend approval unanimously, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? We had quite a bit of discussion on this item.
Can I refresh my memory? What are the two adjacent PUDs?
It's really just, there's the, overall, it's the, just that Colonial Town Park PUD, which is the shopping center, as well as the apartments that are behind it. It's what was allowed there. And it allowed most, kind of retail-type uses primarily within the PUD. Certainly, the hotel's one of them. I think a movie theater was in that mix. There are several other uses that were allowed approved as part of that PUD. The two lots that are adjacent is, one is a vacant, developable lot. One of them is actually, that large area in the corner there is actually the detention pond for that, for the development. And it's kind of tied to the main lot as well.
Other questions?
So, prior to it being brought for the height overlay, it was already going to be a hotel?
The lot adjacent to that was, there was going to be a hotel, there was one approved back in 08.
You said a lot adjacent to it, not this specific lot?
Not this specific lot, the lot directly to the east of it, well, east southeast there, where it says H2 and PUD on the map. There was a hotel approved, it was a Marriott product, I can't remember exactly which version, back in 08.
Okay.
Is this the same group that's bringing the?
It's, it's a completely different developer.
Other questions or comments? Okay, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is also a public hearing, it's consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on tax map 55, parcel 2.16. Kevin?
Yes Mayor and Council, this is the plan of services for the annexation, which is the next item on your agenda. This puts in, in writing the services the town would be providing upon the effective date, the annexation of the property, which would be all services except for water, which would be provided by Consolidated Utility District. The planning commission did recommend approval, 641 against, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on the plan of services? Seeing none, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against the plan of services. Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to council for a motion.
I'm moving to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item G, which is the public hearing for consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PUD zoning of property located on tax map 55, parcel 2.16 requested by Jennifer Speck on behalf of Leland Rex Wall containing 16.5 acres. The property is located at 3368 Ambleville Road. Kevin?
Yes Mayor and Council, this, this item and the next public hearing with the rezoning request, the PUD amendment request are tied together. It's one development, overall development proposed. There are two separate ordinances, as if one's an annex, one is being annexed and one is not. So they had to be separated for that purpose. So I'll go through the whole development for the, and discuss the whole thing all at one time. Again, this is just for the, the area on the map that is highlighted in blue. That's the parcel that would be requested to be annexed and zone PUD. It's about 1,600 feet south of the intersection with Morton Lane there along Ambleville Road. Land use plan would support medium density, single family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of RM in Rutherford County and the Avian Glen PUD in town, which is the parcel directly to the south, which is also a part of this development. Again, the state of town would be providing all services except for water, which would be provided by CUD, which is, they have indicated there is adequate fire flow here for residential development, but not for commercial development. So, and this PUD does have a commercial piece to it, so they would have to work on that before they could develop any of the commercial portion of the, of the development. Sewer is not available to this property at this time. A force main from this development is proposed through existing county road rights way to the existing sewer leak station in Amberton. This property does have an existing house with several detached accessory structures on it already. This proposed PUD is for, well, the existing, there's an existing PUD on the parcel that is red, highlighted in red there, which was 66 townhomes, also had about 20,000 square feet of commercial in that built area, an event venue and horse stables and a wine, winery facility. This proposed PUD, which would be the blue and red parcels tied together, is for mixed use development, has 78 single family lots with an 1,800 square foot minimum size house on those, 84 townhomes with about 1,400 square foot size on those, and then 14 villas slash zero outline units with a 1,600 square foot minimum size for those. In addition, about 2.1 acres of the overall PUD would be reserved for commercial development, about 19,000 square feet of structures. Uses allowed would be C4 as well as, at least for a temporary time, the retail portion of the winery there would still remain as well. Pickleball courts would be a part of that commercial area. There would be about 22 acres of open space in the residential portion of the development with various amenities as a part of that. Traffic study was required, was submitted, it was in your packet. The recommended improvements included a left turn lane and right turn deceleration lane at the primary project entrance, which is across from an existing county road called Beatty Court. In addition, the main entrance road is required to have two lanes as it exits the site, so you'd have a straight through and a straight through right turn and then a left turn. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, 641 against, with the following conditions. One, that the villa slash zero outline portion of the development is required to comply with the Housing for Older Persons Act. Two, the developer is required to submit the required HNA study for alterations to the flood hazard area and a call mark to FEMA for review. Three, the improvements recommended as a part of the traffic study are required to be constructed. Four, to redistribute the guest parking within the townhome portion to better serve all the proposed units. And then number five, to eliminate the alley with direct access, access to Ambleville Road and provide an alternative fire truck turnaround for that area or construct a public street which meets town standards in that location. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval with those conditions, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? We've had quite a bit of discussion on this. Anything else for Kevin?
This has actually sort of been down zoned from what it was before. The villas are 55 plus as I recall, correct? Parking, pads and all that's been addressed, right?
Right.
I know in planning commission, we had one question that came up, it's probably already been addressed. Since I don't know that it has, I'll ask the question. There was a gentleman that came in and wanted to make sure that the water was going to flow into that pond, and I think the developer actually wants it too. So, was that addressed?
I know that the developer and that gentleman did speak to one another. There was quite a bit of this conversation happened after this item was finished at the meeting. So I can't speak to that beyond that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they probably did that because both wanted the same thing, so.
Other questions for Kevin?
Just a comment, and Mark touched on this. This, this development touches a lot of different areas, from seniors to the folks that are just getting started out, maybe a townhome to the single family home, plus the amenities that are park lighting, park light in very, very numerous ways. So this was an improvement, in my opinion, over what was proposed prior to, and better fits the community.
And a ton of green space.
Yes.
I mean, a lot of green space, so. Okay, we will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll go to council, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Motion a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Jeff, there is an item on our desk tonight that was not included in your packet. It is, it's all here, and it's highlighted in yellow.
Yes Mayor and Council, as you're aware, after each annexation, it's sort of a housekeeping for, for us, but TCA requires that a resolution that just basically restates what you just approved for annexations, anytime that property is annexed on behalf of the property owner. And so this resolution is just memorializing the, the last two that you just approved.
Questions for Jeff on this, we do this after each annexation. We do not have to do a public hearing for this, so do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to our last public hearing tonight. It goes along with this project, it's consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the approved PUD from tax map 55, parcel 29.02 requested by Jennifer Speck. The property requested to be amended, contains approximately 37 acres and is located at 3545 Ambleville Road. Kevin?
Yes Mayor and Council, there's nothing else to really add, this is, again, it's the same development, it's just the adjoining tract of land, it was already within the town and already had the PUD zoning. This is to amend the PUD for the development as we just talked about.
Questions for Kevin on this, about the PUD amendment? Seeing none, we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll go to council for a motion.
I'm moving to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to new business, our planning commission report. Our first is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28, parcel 78.00 from PUD to C4 requested by Rock Springs LLC. The property requested to be rezoned, contains approximately 74 one hundredths of an acre and is located at 1071 Rock Springs Road. Kevin?
Yes Mayor and Council, this is a piece of property, it's on Rock Springs Road, about 900 feet west of the intersection with Old Nashville Highway. Land use plan here is also, as several tonight, was our Smerly corridor character area. And so this, either zoning in this case would really mix, be a fit with our land use plan. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, C2 and C4. The previously approved PUD is for a new building to be constructed that houses a dance studio with an attached apartment. That PUD was never implemented, and the new owner wishes to just utilize the property with C4 uses and utilizing the existing building that was already on the property. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval unanimously, and staff would also recommend approval.
Mark or Tim, either one, anything on it to add?
No, Kevin mentioned it was zoned that way because of the lib work setup it had there before.
Counsel, any questions for Kevin on this? I think it's pretty straightforward. Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and C2 zoning of property located on tax map 28, parcel 18.00 requested by Michael Hollingshead containing 4.03 acres. The property is located on West Jefferson Pike and Hickory Grove Road. Kevin?
Yes Mayor and Council, this is an annexation request. Property has frontage on West Jefferson Pike and Hickory Grove Road. Land use plan is the 840 gateway, which are kind of, is a mix of, of kind of the retail and restaurant type uses, residential as well as industrial and warehousing, kind of a mix of things there. Surrounding zoning is PUD, which is the cornerstone of Smyrna PUD, which is directly east of the property in town, and CS in Rutherford County, which is commercial services. Town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation. Sewer is not available there yet, but it will be completed as part of the Jefferson Pike road improvements, so certainly they will be there eventually. Property is currently undeveloped. The planning commission did recommend approval of this request unanimously, and staff would also recommend approval.
Mike or, oh, Mike.
I'm Mark.
You're Mark?
Yeah.
Marky Mark? Mark and Tim, anything to add?
Let's just step forward in, in the continued improvement of our infrastructure with a fire hall to service the area and, you know, community access here, so. This is a good project for the town.
Agreed. Any other comments?
Yeah, when I first looked at this, on my small little map here, I thought that that building is, is part of it, but it's not part of it, it'll stay there, right?
It's separate jack of land, separate ownership, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, so this, is this part? Is this part of the property that's being donated for the fire station?
Yes.
So two, is it two and a half acres?
Yeah, we'll be getting roughly two acres, and then the other parcel will be used for commercial development.
Okay. In that present, there's not been any decision on what that's going to be at this point.
We don't have, we don't have a plat yet, I mean, we have a kind of a rough draft of a plat. We're kind of waiting till this is in the city so we could review it administratively as, as, as town. Instead of, without annexation, it would have to go to the county planning commission and all that, so. But we, we kind of know, we have a pretty good idea of what it's going to look like.
I think she was asking, what's the commercial going to be?
Oh, I'm sorry. We, we don't know.
That's what I'm asking if they have mentioned.
They haven't, they haven't, we don't know about the commercial.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
My apologies.
No, we, we don't, we don't know.
But the portion the town will be receiving would be, if you look at that existing building in the triangle, if you drew a line straight across where it says requested, that front facing Jefferson Pike would be the section of property that town would be accepting as a donation for a fire hall.
Other questions?
Sorry, I would assume that any ingress egress off of that would come through Hickory Grove, right? Nothing directly onto Jefferson Pike, right?
We would have, we'd have direct access on to Hick, or on to Jefferson Pike, and we'll be working with T-DOT to allow for a crossover there for the trucks to get in and out. Basically, what we consider is trucks going out would come out on Jefferson, coming back in would come on Hickory Grove and have a, there'd be a, a way for them to come back in and loop back into the firehouse, so they wouldn't have to back in. That's right.
And Hickory Grove is being straightened out, and a signal, a signal will go there.
We've, the signal will go at Hickory Grove.
We've already got approval for that driveway there?
Yes. Okay.
Other questions or comments?
And just for public knowledge, I mean, we can't have access anywhere we want onto, onto state highways, and so we have to get permission to do that.
And I may have been quick to speak to, we are petitioning T-DOT for that. We don't feel like there'll be any issues because it's for safety equipment and ingress egress for that, so we don't.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, I just, you know, that's, and obviously depending on how the road looks when it's done, that curve may be straighter than it is today, but there's a curve right there, and that's why I was asking if we're going to have fire trucks coming in or out in the middle of a curve, you know, is that going to create any kind of issues? But hopefully it's going to straighten itself out, and with the wideness of that road, even if they're coming out there, there should be plenty of lanes for cars to get over and let them out, and that kind of thing.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move to new business, item three, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 19, parcel 25.03 to go from I2 to PUD requested by Camden Venture LLC. The property requested to be rezoned, contains approximately 6.13 acres and is located at 704 Swan Drive. Kevin?
Yes Mayor and Council, this is a request on Swan Drive, it's about 600 feet east of the intersection with Weekly Lane. This is actually part of our airport renovation character area, so certainly this would be a fit for that area. Mix of I2 and R6 zoning surrounding this property. This proposed PUD is to utilize a portion of the existing building that's on the site for vehicle sales. The proposed operation is not a typical lot, car lot as most sales would originate online. Vehicles would be stored inside the building. There would not be any new construction as a part of this PUD, as far as new, new buildings to be built. The PUD would add this as an allowed use, but would also keep the building setbacks and uses as a lot in I2. So essentially, still have, be an I2 zoning with, just with decided use allowed with these conditions. Affirmant has, has stated there would be no repair use at this location. The planning commission did recommend approval with a couple of conditions. One, as is stated, no repair work of any kind is done at this location, and vehicles for sale are stored inside the building, not outside. Again, planning commission reviewed, did recommend approval, staff would also recommend approval.
And I know you've said it twice, but I just want to reiterate, no, no working on the vehicles outside and no vehicles for sale outside.
No working on the vehicles at all, and then no, no vehicles outside other than, you know, customers or employee parking.
Right, but nothing for sale.
How big is the existing building? I mean, how many cars are we looking at this, this structure holding?
It's actually, and I apologize, there was some additional information that I intended to get to in your packet that's not in there, and that was, that's my fault. We'll certainly get it to you, if you pass this tonight, we'll get it to you for workshop. There's the existing building, and the applicant is here, you might could answer quicker than I could, but it's about, it's, oh gosh, 45, 50,000 square feet total, but they're only using a portion of it. They're using about, it's about 30, 35,000 square feet, something like that. But it's a large portion of the building.
Is that the old Turner building?
Yes, and Davidson ladder was actually there, Turner was in it, but then Davidson ladder part of that.
This is very similar to Duncan Motors type thing, but this, you know, Duncan kind of, they do a lot of Japanese right-hand drive, left-hand drive stuff. This, this is an existing business in a neighboring community that does high-end motorhead cars, kind of, you know, the Camaros and Mustangs, all those kind of things.
Monte Carlos.
Monte Carlos, and Monte Carlos, all of those kind of cars. They're in an existing industrial section in Laverne right now, and they're looking to move their business into Smyrna. I would bet a couple of points on this, council's probably been in their building down there, so.
So, two, two questions Kevin. One, do we know what the rest of the building's going to be used for?
There's an existing, I mean, I don't know if Turner's still in there, it's Turner sign is still up all over.
How does that affect the PUD?
They can still operate, I mean, they're taking up, again, just a portion of the parking lot that's in front of this, kind of the middle part of the building, you've got lot that's in front of this, kind of the middle part of the building, you've got some mini storage on one end of the building that's kind of separated off, that will still be able, again, they're, all the uses that are currently allowed in that zoning could still be there and can continue in that other part of the building.
So the PUD doesn't allow any additional usage except this car sales?
Yes.
So they would still be obligated by the I2 zoning anyways?
Building setbacks, heights, uses, all those things.
And then the second question, and I know this is probably splitting hairs, but number two says vehicles for sale are stored inside the building, there, are we, are there, is there gonna be any storage outside or no storage outside? If the vehicle is for sale or not for sale?
Yeah.
Other than parking, there shouldn't be anything outside?
Yes, there shouldn't be anything outside, other than, like I said, those employees that are parking there, that sort of thing. That's what they had said, that everything's gonna be stored inside.
Those are good hairs to split, though. Yeah, I just, I could just see, you know, how cars not for sale, and maybe they're clearing a title or working out something, and the car ends up sitting there for six months, because it's not quite for sale yet, right? That's what I was thinking of, those kind of deals.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
So you said there, most of their sales is online?
Yes. Internet.
Yeah, they, they store the vehicles here, and people come to, they purchase, they purchase them online, or at least see them online, they come to see it before they buy them, sure, but.
So they're not gonna have?
This is a very special market, it's not like a car lot on.
Well, I'm trying to make sure I get clarity.
No, no, I agree, I agree, I want you to understand.
There are not gonna be for sale signs put up outside or on the windows or something like that, will it?
I'm sure they probably will have a sign for the name of the business and that sort of thing, but, you know, that's not true. I don't think you're gonna have the big flag waving, you know, sale today or.
No festoons.
Right, no festoons, right.
Well, I'm not familiar with them, so I need to get clarification. I understand that some of the other council people may be more familiar with this particular company.
It's a different, it's a different market.
And the applicant is here, if you all wanted to suspend the rules for them to speak, they might could answer questions better than I could, but if you all want that, they are here tonight.
These are the vehicles that you wouldn't want to have on an open lot anyway, I mean, due to the values and whatnot.
My understanding, yeah.
Yeah. Deteriorate the value pretty quickly.
Are these, are these mostly consignment?
Yes, yes.
Anybody, anybody want to speak to the owner?
I could, I wouldn't mind having an explanation of what they foresee in the building.
Sure.
We'll suspend the rules, and we will come forward, you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Sean Ogbani, I'm operations manager for Gateway Classic Cars. We have 21 locations across the United States, one in Laverne. Been operating with consignment primarily. We store all our vehicles inside, we don't have for sale signs outside, we don't have big, I think the closest thing we have is just customers coming in, and if they have something on their vehicle, that's their, their business, but we keep everything contained within the building. Majority of our sales, 90% over, are online, so primarily, we're just dealing in warehousing, just moving vehicles in and out, distribution around, and then working with the local markets in the area.
Great, okay, questions?
Are you moving the Laverne location, or is this in addition to Laverne?
We are moving the Laverne location.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I actually have one more question, just for clarification, and I think you did, this was brought up at the planning commission, but I just want to make sure, that if the business changes, that someone else can't come in and use this for car sales?
Right, they would have to meet, yeah, they would have to meet the same criteria. A different business could come in, but they would have to meet the same criteria. Everything's stored inside, no repair work, all those things, right?
Okay, so they would be held to the same standard?
Yes.
Okay, otherwise, if someone else bought it, then they could turn it into some other business as long as it fit the I2?
Sure.
Okay, zoning, okay.
Actually, this becomes more restrictive, doesn't it?
I'm sorry?
It becomes more restrictive.
Yeah, this would be certainly more restrictive than the typical, yeah, as Brian said, it's, it's very similar to the Duncan Automotive, kind of their, that model. This is a little different, and they actually came in and they added some parking and did some work on their building and whatever, and they're not really gonna add parking or anything like that, it's just using what's already there.
Other questions?
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28E, group A, parcel 16.01, to go from R4 to C2. It's requested by Barry Royal. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 20 acres and is located on Imperial Boulevard. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is a piece of property, has frontage on Imperial Boulevard as well as Front Street, and also borders the CSX Railroad right of way along the eastern border of it, and the entire parcel. Land use plan for this area is actually mixed residential, which kind of is, looked at as a mix of housing, kind of varying a lot sizes, kind of meant to be a transition between character areas. The surrounding zoning is R1, R4, R6, C2, and C3, so there's a mix of a lot of things here. Planning commission did review this, did recommend approval unanimously, staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin, or Mark or Tim, anything?
Any idea what's being planned?
Developers, property owners would be, also be the developer, indicated to me as like an office warehouse type development, kind of, you know, the roll-up doors in the back with, you know, offices in the front, that type of development.
And it backs up to the railroad? It backs up to the train track?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's a, it's a relatively narrow strip, it's not as narrow as on the other side.
Well, we asked that question at planning the other night, as far as parking was concerned, because we know the other side is kind of limited on their parking space, but this side has a lot more space to work.
It's about 200 feet deep, so, for comparison, the other side of the railroad track, those lots are about 50.
Yeah, it would have to be C5. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
I do have a question, so, the site plan would have to show where they're gonna make roadway, or, because right now, there are none, they would have to connect from Imperial Boulevard, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would anticipate probably several points, since it's such a long piece of property, there'll be several points of access, and with, I would anticipate, I haven't, they'll have to show us what they want to do, but I would anticipate you'd have probably a row of buildings with something similar, these are similar type buildings as what you would have in the, off Seven Oaks Boulevard, where we have that type of development. Some buildings like that will have several different businesses in each building, and put a road behind it to provide access to those, those back roll-up doors and that sort of thing.
Okay.
But then they'll be broken up in various places along through there, to have, so you have access in between the buildings as well.
Okay. Other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now move on to item B under new business, which is our packaged liquor board report, and there were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. We'll now move on to item nine, other. Brian or Amber, anything tonight?
No.
Okay. Item 10 is status reports. Rex, you're up.
August state share tax, we received $642,853. August local sales tax, we received $1,599,124. Our sales tax revenues remain strong.
HG, why is that?
You know, we encourage people to shop local, Mary Esther, and when they shop local, then most of the money stays in town.
And what's that mean for property tax?
Um, that means that our property tax stay low.
That's right.
Sometimes, Mary Esther, I refer to the sales taxes, the property tax abatement tax.
I would agree. We're able to keep property taxes low when our sales taxes that come in remain high. Okay, um, can we get those slides for the next time to, so we can share with public? Perfect. Okay, questions on this for Rex? Okay, we'll move on to announcements. Directors, department heads, anything tonight? Okay, Ms. Amber?
I'm good.
Brian D.
Mayor and Counsel, I have a couple of things I'd like to share with you, a couple of things revolving around just our employees. I was informed that Brian Vogel, who is one of our building and grounds employees, brother passed away about a week ago, and just want to share condolences with that family, and I know they would love to have us continue to keep them in prayer. Also, Captain Jeff Dwyer from our police department had some shoulder surgery, and he's recovering at home nicely, but he'll be out for probably four to six weeks, so just want to make sure everyone was aware of that. I want to apologize to everyone tonight for the council meeting, for our parking lot, believe it or not, it's getting close to being completed. We hope we'll have asphalt completed tomorrow, and by Friday, have the striping down, and we'll be back to normal, but we've been flip-flopping the, the parking lot, and unfortunately, we were not able to park out front tonight, and I know that was a bit of an inconvenience for our crowd, but please know that we're, we're getting very close to finishing this project, and Tom and I were talking today, I think it's been 40 years since anything's been done to our parking lot. So it was much in need of rehab, and we also, during this time, brought up compliance, all of our ADA compliance, so the parking lot should be done this week, and hopefully we'll be moving forward.
I would like to say, while Tom was gone, Charles moved it along pretty quickly, so anything to that?
You know, I sent a lot of this stuff on the floor.
And he was sending some emails during his vacation, he was keeping up with the contract.
That's just because he thought Charles was getting to it a little faster.
The only thing I'll say is although Charles' emails were on point and a little more direct, they were not near as enjoyable to read.
Yeah, Tom is getting known for entertaining emails.
Tom's emails.
You're 25 Waldo.
I'm literally getting up in the morning and looking for Tom's email to see what he said, so.
Also, I, she was not able to stay this evening, but our, I wanted to let everybody know, our PIO began work today with us, Heather Kent, we're proud to have her on staff, and she's gonna do a great job for us, but she began her career with the town of Smyrna today, and I think we had her drinking from a fire hose a little bit, but she's gonna come up to feed very quickly, so glad to have her on, on board. Couple of other things, I think we've got a couple of slides I want to share with you. The mayor and I were contacted about a week and a half before this actually happened, but the Tennessee Run for the Fallen, which was just a very unique project that came through our town, there's a flag that was flown at the 9/11 memorial, and it's making its way across the US. It did, they did the Tennessee portion of the run here a couple of weeks ago. We were able to be there with them, and we, the police department gave them an escort through town. I believe they started in Clarksville, and the run concluded at the War Memorial the morning of Sunday, the, gosh, I forget the date, but a Sunday morning. Saturday afternoon, they came through, and we actually raised the flag at the Jeff Kuss Memorial that's in the run, and it was for nine minutes and 11 seconds to memorialize the 9/11. This is to represent all of the fallen soldiers since 9/11 and the war on tariff. They actually stopped at each mile, and they honored fallen soldier, most of those, all of them were from Tennessee. They were able to get the names of several folks from the Smyrna Rutherford County area, and that was just a very nice event. I want to thank Taylor Farms, Taylor Farms helped us, we actually fed them at the park after the 9/11, nine minutes and 11 seconds of raising the flag, we had dinner for them at the park, and then we picked up the next morning and got them down to the Laverne. In fact, I think we actually, chief, if I'm not mistaken, we actually escorted them through Laverne to the Davison County line, and Davison County picked them up there to make sure that it was a safe run for them, but it was a really nice event, and they come back through, I hope we get a bigger, we get more time to get the word out to the community, because it was a very touching and, and nice event, so appreciate the mayor, Amber, and several folks that came out and supported it, from the fire department, the chief, and the police department, so. We've got an event coming up at our park on November the 6th, Sharp Springs Park, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This was an event that happened last year, and they're doing it again this year, but it's the Tennessee Jeep Plate Cruise In. Last year, there were several hundred Jeeps in the park. They're raising awareness to get a Jeep license plate, and the money that goes to the state, a portion of that money will come back and help fund the, well, I just went blank, the Soldier's Child Program. So that's a nice event, and if you can come out. Did I say, did I mess that up? You guys are talking above me here.
Yeah, we were just making eyes that you forgot, so.
Well, it's happening, I, I'm getting older.
She made.
But anyway, it's a nice event, a lot of fun, if you get a chance, come out on Sharp Springs on November the 6th, on a Sunday afternoon for the Jeep event. Last thing I want to talk about, we're in the process of beginning our planning for our Veterans Day event, this is one of those events that's become very special to the town. That'll be Friday, November the 11th of 2022, it'll be at the Jeff Kuss Memorial, and we'll be working with our local VFW to put this program on. I think we've got a meeting this week on, on the planning of this, so just want to make sure people got it on their calendar, so, Mayor and Counsel, that's all I have this evening.
Anything to add?
Wait a minute, I forgot about this. I gotta do my love where you live, folks, this is my, this is my soapbox. We still continue to fight trash and litter across the town. I will tell you, HG and I was talking today, he was telling me about seeing some folks out on Enan Springs Road down by the park, family, two children, two adults with their vests on, picking up trash. I did notice today, there was about two or three bags of trash on the side of the street that they'd left for us to pick up, and I'm working with the streets department to get that picked up, hopefully no later than tomorrow. But we do appreciate those that take the effort and make the effort to make our community beautiful. We just ask and challenge everyone to remember, don't throw the trash and the litter out of the, the vehicle, take it home, take it to the service station, put it in a trash receptacle, and learn to love where you live, and let's make Smyrna beautiful.
You know, sometimes I think people think that it's the town's job to pick up all the trash, and of course, the town's gonna do what it can, but the public themselves can, just like these folks that I saw over the weekend, can pick some up themselves, and, you know, once people start picking it up themselves, then they quit throwing it out also.
Yeah, we have, we have a gentleman that picks up out on Florence Road on a pretty regular basis, this couple that you said you saw on Enan Springs. I know Seven Oaks, there's a couple of people there that, I mean, they're almost regimented on what they do on that back road of picking up trash and stuff, so yeah, you know, the more we can get people involved, you know, we've got a couple of programs that runs through our public works department with adopt a highway and those kind of things, we have several businesses involved in that, but the more we can get involved, the better, and if you're out there and you'd like to get involved, just give us a call, we can, we can help get you connected to some of those opportunities.
Well, I think there's some people that think we can go on any piece of property that we want and do whatever we want because we're the town, and we can't, I mean, we can't go on private property and, and do that, so.
Okay.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Anything for you?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
Raquel?
Just condolences to the town losses, and I want to say congratulations, this Saturday is gonna be the Hall of Fame induction ceremony for Smyrna High School, and just congratulations to those that are being inducted this year. And that's all I have.
HG?
Well, you know, going back to the taxes and such as that, brings up the idea that we're also getting close to the, the holiday season, so we would encourage everybody to shop locally throughout the holiday season, and to kick off the Christmas part of it, the town of Smyrna's annual lighting ceremony will be at a new location this year, it's going to be downtown at the depot, and we've got some real surprises in store as far as the decoration of that area. We will have live Christmas music, hot chocolate and cookies, photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus. We will have live Christmas music, hot chocolate and cookies, photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus. Should be a very festive event, that's November 22nd, which happens to be my first grandson's birthday, so maybe we can get him down for that, that would be a good one, and that'll be at 6:00 PM, as I say, at the Smyrna Train Depot, so come out and see Christmas at the Depot. That's all I've got, Mary Esther.
You don't want to talk about Depot Days at all?
About what?
Depot Days, does somebody else got Depot Days itself?
Depot Days, we had Depot Days, it was a great event, and of course that's a Simon sponsored event, Smyrna Independent Merchants Association, and it could not be done without the departments of the town of Smyrna, the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Parks Department, I mean, it's, it's a big event, and a lot of people participate, and it's a lot of fun.
Okay, Carpe?
Carpe, Carpe has a hand in it also, yes.
Well, and I think it was a huge success, I mean, there were so many people out there, so.
It's gotten larger every year, it's bigger and bigger.
Great.
I will add my condolences and best wishes on a speedy recovery, Captain Dwyer, and you know, walking through Depot Days this year, it was, you know, it was that feeling that it's back, you know, I know we've been through COVID and whatnot, but the other thing, to me, it highlighted that hometown feel we have here, it's still here. You know, I know that we have lots of growth, and, you know, we see the positive things as far as what we're bringing in from the tax bases, we're seeing folks that still want to move here, we're in a good position, and we're very fortunate and very blessed, because there's a lot of communities across the country that aren't not in the same position we are.
Great.
Thanks.
Jerry?
Hello, I think we've got something to come up. Yeah, I had the honor and the privilege back on in September the 16th to go read to a couple of first grade, first grade classes, that was Ms. Gunther and Ms. Womack at Rock Springs Elementary School. Me and my wife went over there, she used to teach there for several years, and so that's her up there on the top left-hand side, doing a whole lot better reading than I did, but it was, it was a lot of fun, those kids are just, it's just to sit back and watch them, absorb things, they're like a sponge, and we had a great time, so I just want to say thank you to Rock Springs Elementary School for allowing us to come.
I noticed it until I saw this picture, your wife's got an A+ on her picture, and yours has got a B and a C down here, I'm not sure what...
That is true.
I didn't want to bring worms in, but like, it's a bookworm, bookworm.
Yeah. Also, I just want to say, I think a lot of you know that I've kind of been out of touch for several weeks now, I had two different stays in the hospital, and the, all of you that had reached out, the outpour of support was so much appreciated, got phone calls, I got food from several ladies up here in this row here, just text, all kind of well wishes, we live in a fantastic town, and I just want to say thank you to everybody, to everybody on this council, all of you guys reached out to me, and it just, it means a lot. And I also want to give a shout out to Stonecrest Hospital. We are so blessed to have that group of people here in this, in this town. I could not have gotten any better care from anybody, I mean, if you needed anything, they were right there. I even had a doctor, my doctor was waiting on me at the nurses station when I came in, how many, how many has that? So, we are so blessed to have that, that hospital here, and I just want to say thank you to that group too. That's all I got.
We're glad you're back, we know you're still recovering, but we sure are glad to see you.
You were pretty heavy, Jerry.
I'm just kidding, I'm sure I was.
I'm just kidding, I'm teasing.
Steve?
Couple of things that you guys have already kind of mentioned a little bit, but I want to go ahead and give my congratulation and appreciation to those members being inducted into the Smyrna Hall of Fame, Danny Brewer, Pierre Lyons, Coach Lyons, and Philip Shadowens, I know all three of them pretty well, and got to play baseball with Coach Lyons, and if you never played baseball with Coach Lyons, you don't know what that means, but if you did, and you understand exactly what that means, one of the best coaches I've ever even witnessed, much less played for, so very much appreciated and deserving of these folks. Also, they're inducting the 2009, 2011 bowling team, which I believe are national champs. Yeah, so I will not be in town Saturday, but want to send my congratulations anyway. And then I think a couple of you mentioned Depot Days, I got the opportunity to work with a couple others on selecting car winners, which Mark will talk about, so that was fun, and Jerry, glad to have you back.
Thank you.
You were not hard for me to carry at all, Mark, this week.
True, it's all true. Jerry, truly, we are glad to have you back, and glad you're feeling better and healing a little bit. Condolences to the Vogel family, obviously to Captain Dwyer for healing, we want to make sure we, also want to lift up Bill and Patsy Brown. Bill had a little procedure done a few days back, and Patsy told me he had to stay awfully still for about six hours, and she said, "I couldn't have done it," but he did, so want to wish them well, thoughts and prayers to them, I've talked to them. The Depot Day event that Steve mentioned was the classic car show that took place the night before, and these are some of the photos from some of the winners that we recognized that evening. Mayor Reed had another obligation to be at, and therefore asked me to, in her stead, to do the Mayor's Cup winner, and so I got to select that winner, and that's the bottom middle right photo there, beautiful 55 Bel Air, it was just gorgeous, beautiful car. And then some of the others mentioned that were award winners here, were a 69 Camaro, there's a Studebaker, and some others, but just some gorgeous classic cars. I understand this year, we, we didn't have space for everybody that wanted to do it, so, I mean, we had, that place was full of classic cars, as full as it could get, so next year, if you're going to bring your car and get there early, would be my recommendation, so. Last but not least, I know you've mentioned this already, November 11th is the Veterans Day Celebration or Memorial Celebration over at the Captain Kous Memorial, and this is one of the things I look forward to, and, you know, Steve has served in the military, my parents both did, and for veterans, for me, that's very special. Veterans are important people to all of us, and it's an opportunity to go and pay homage to our veterans, it's an opportunity to place our hands over our hearts and say thank you, and so thank a veteran, if you didn't get to recently, take the time and thank them. Mr. Farrar, I appreciate you coming in tonight and doing the pledge with us, or the, I'm sorry, the proclamation with us tonight, and thank you for your service too, sir. That's all I have.
Great. So have a couple of housekeeping, keeping items. First is, I think, Haunting on Front Street. It is October 14th and 15th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, it'll take place in our Depot District at 98 Front Street. You can join us for chili, ghost stories, haunted lantern tour, and good old fashioned Halloween party for the kids. It is $5 a person, and children ages five and under are free. Next is an event we all look forward to, Chief Bill's Smyrna Fire Department Open House will be Sunday, October 16th, from 1:00 to 5:00 at Fire Station 5 at 2200 Rock Springs Road, I guess because we're doing a little building on to our fire station that we normally have it at, so please join us for a day of fun, informative displays, and exciting events. Scheduled events and displays are the 911 Simulator, the Apparatus and Safety Demonstrations, the Inflatables, the Smokehouse, Sparky the Fire Dog, free hot dogs, and popcorn, so we welcome you all out. Next is, it is election time, and early voting will be here at Town Hall, back in the back, they'll be parking out back, and everything's going to be done, paved, lined off, and ready, right? Great. Right, Tom?
Guaranteed.
Woo-hoo, okay.
Wow.
And it will start October 19th and go through November 3rd. The voting times here at Town Hall are Monday through Friday from 10:00 AM until 6:00 PM, and Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00, and Election Day is Tuesday, November the 8th. Voting does not take place here at Town Hall on Election Day. Next, we have Halloween in the Park, it put on by Smyrna Parks and Recreation and Utilities Department? Yes, there you go. We appreciate that. It is at Sharp Springs Natural Area, Saturday, October the 29th, from 3:00 to 8:30, there'll be hay rides, inflatables games, pie eating contests that Brian will be participating in, train rides, food vendors, and a tri-star sponsored haunted hospital. If you have not been out to this event, we encourage you to come out, it is a great event. Mike, about how many people would you say?
Five, eight thousand.
So about 5,000 to 8,000 people, and, you know, one of the things that's so special is every booth that is out there supplies candy for the kids, and so they can trick or treat in an environment in which you know that is going to be safe, and let me tell you, it is pretty competitive with the costume contest, it's pretty difficult choosing those, so.
It's hard to look at an eight-year-old who's really wanting to win in his face and say, "I've got to pick this other," it's pretty tough.
So, next is our Smyrna Parks and Recreation and Soax Wilderness Walk, taking place on November the 5th at Sharp Springs Park. It is a free event, all ages are welcome, and there will include a live animal show. And last but not least is our Town of Smyrna Christmas Parade and Food Drive, the 47th Annual, will be on Sunday, December 4th at 2:00 PM. Spectators will gather along the parade route to watch floats, bands, classic cars, dancing groups, and Santa and Mrs. Claus as they travel northbound on Lowry Street. It will start at Bayfield and go all the way down to Nolan Drive. In addition to enjoying the parade, we invite each one of you to make a difference in our community by donating to our Christmas Parade Food Drive. Town personnel will collect non-perishable food items from spectators along the parade route for, and from our participants at check-in. We don't charge a fee, we ask people to bring donations for the food bank. The town is accepting applications for entry in this year's parade. Organizations wishing to participate may complete the application online at townofsmyrna.org or in person at Smyrna Town Hall, and when do they have to be, do we have a date for signup yet, when it has to begin, do we know? No, we'll know that next time. There we go? Yes?
Typically a week and a half before the parade, but let's get, we'll get a date on that for you.
We'll get a definite date for the next meeting. What I hope you can see in the things that we've talked about tonight is, we have really busy departments that are putting on events for our community that hopefully people can feel a part of the community, and we just appreciate everybody on our team that pitches in to make these events possible. A couple of personal items tonight, thank you for everybody who helped make Depot Days a huge success, I heard lots of great things about it. Kevin Arnold, we held Kevin's retirement, and I think it was a really nice event, and I think Kevin and Lynn and the family were so excited to see a lot of people from lots of different organizations, other departments, from all over the state, so Kevin sure has made a huge contribution, and he will be missed. And the other thing is, we did, Brian and I did the State of the Town last week, week before, last week, talking a little bit about where we'd been over the last year, and things that we're going to be doing this coming year, and that, has it aired on Channel 3 yet?
Yes.
So, if you haven't seen it, I encourage you to take a look. And last but not least, Daddy celebrated his 78th birthday on Sunday, so happy birthday to Daddy. Oh, Ms. Amber has one or fifteen.
Parade entry form deadline is Friday, November 18th.
Friday, November 18th, so if you would like to participate in our parade, make sure you have your entry in, I mean, your signup sheet in by Friday, November 18th. Great. Anything else? If nothing else, we are adjourned.
Okay.